All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, the, uh, Monday, February the 8th, 2020, 2021. Time is now 5:00 PM. The, uh, work session of the City Council of City Trinidad will now come to order, uh, through Zoom meeting. Uh, so let's go ahead and get started. Uh, following items are on file for consideration of City Council. Item one, discussion regarding Jacobs Services contract for operations, maintenance, and management services renewal. Item two, review of Colorado Department Transportation IGA for Act at 11. Item three is fourth quarter 2020 marijuana sales tax allocations consideration. And item four, if there are any other agenda items that council would like to bring forward for, uh, future sessions. So getting started with, uh, you know, the Jacobs Services contract for operations, maintenance, and management services renewal. Let's go ahead and get started with it. Like I said, I do know that there was a lot of reading to, to get done with that. I know I've got several questions, uh, that I've got. Uh, the one question that I'll start off with, and then I'll just turn it over. I just wanted to bring this to, uh, everyone's attention. The information that it shows, it shows for the agreement in level, uh, level one, I believe. But every place that it shows in the language, it shows that it's a CH2M. Does that have to be changed to Jacobs, Mr. Valentine? Or are they doing business as Jacobs? Or what is it? CH2M doing business as, is that the way the contract's going to read?
Um, I'll, I'll have to verify that. I know that Mr. Kip is online. We initially contracted with CH2M and then Jacobs actually, uh, came in and, and bought them out. But, uh, CH2M is still a company, as far as I know, under Jacobs. So the contract is with CH2M, but I'll, I'll verify that. And I don't know, John, if you want to just jump in real quick and, and let us know?
Yeah, so, uh, when Jacobs merged with CH2M, they bought all legal rights to the CH2M name. And all their, uh, contracts under CH2M and everything still exists. And the company still exists as like a sister company to Jacobs. So all the contract language under CH2M will stay the same.
Okay, I, I was just curious, because like I said, it had, uh, CH2M listed in several places and with the, uh, when you guys bought them out, I was just curious about that. Uh, okay, Mr. Valentine, why don't you go ahead and lead this off? If there's any information you want to start off with?
Sure. So thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, in your packet, there's actually the original agreement that was, uh, uh, signed for January 2017, I believe. And it's a five-year agreement that renews, uh, if nothing is done, it, it renews. Well, um, in discussion with John and Jacobs, what they've offered us is some options to sort of renew early. Um, the renewal date is January of 2021, the end of January of 2021. Um, so we have 120 days prior to that. Otherwise, it renews automatically to another five-year term. So, um, we had this discussion with council previously where Jacobs slash CH2M provided us, uh, kind of, uh, three options. Um, and, uh, they, uh, they laid them out and there was good discussion on those, on what, you know, each of those options were. Um, we can ask John to go through them if you have any questions. But I think, uh, all this reading material, it laid it out. The, uh, the options are for renewal of a five-year agreement. Uh, it's actually an amendment. CH2M has provided us three templates for the amendment. Uh, one that is for the five-year renewal. Um, included with that is, uh, uh, wastewater collection GIS assets with maintenance connection. Um, and then also repair, rewire, upgrade the fixtures of three light poles, uh, the aeration basin to LED. The second option is for a 10-year agreement term. And it also has that GIS system, the, uh, upgraded the fixtures to LED. And then there's, uh, they'll conduct a tier-one asset management analysis to facilitate the, uh, the development of the asset management policies and procedures moving forward for the wastewater. Um, we've talked about asset management a lot. I have on, uh, just, just getting an inventory of our assets and, and knowing the condition they're in and, uh, laying out critical path for maintenance and what, uh, you know, what could come next. Uh, you know, there's always emergencies, but it would formulate a plan so that we have, you know, a plan moving forward on, um, costs and which, uh, infrastructure is most critical failure based on, you know, life expectancy of whatever's in the ground, mostly in the wastewater, it's clay tile. Um, at the plant, there's a lot of, uh, moving parts and pumps and everything else, so that, that would add that in. And then, uh, the dashboard, uh, for maintenance connect would allow us to actually utilize all of this, uh, information. The 15-year plan, which is the next option, includes all of the above. And then, um, it would include an initial distribution system GIS setup. The distribution system is for the, uh, water distribution. So it would, uh, provide for a GIS mapping system for all of our water infrastructure. If you notice the pricing, um, the five-year base fee is, uh, um, on there, 1,170,000 a year. 10 years is a little bit lower, uh, 15 years is a little bit lower, so there's some incentives. One question that was asked, I think by the mayor last time, was to provide just kind of a, a menu of what each one of these would cost à la carte, out of scope. If we were to say, no, let's just do this one, but let's add, um, the GIS system for distribution. And you, you can see that in, uh, the, uh, pricing, that would be 51,408. So, um, with that, uh, I, uh, I've kind of looked at it from my perspective. I, I hate to go out 15 years on any kind of an agreement that's, that's just too long. But I think the 10-year, uh, pricing with what's included is, is of some value. Of course, five-year is also a great, uh, great price right now. That price we're, we're looking at, a 1,176 would go down to 1,170 in five years, 1,165 in 10 years. So, um, I, I'll entertain any questions or, I don't know if, uh, if you would like. John is also available for any of the questions on these contracts. But, uh, that's it in a nutshell, Mayor, kind of briefly.
Mr. Valentine, the, uh, the savings on that 10-year, I don't have it up on the screen here. I can't do that, uh, because I want to keep my screen open. What is that savings, uh, in the 10-year, uh, over a 10-year period?
So the, the five-year, um, 117... Sorry, I have to use a calculator on that one. 1165.
Hopefully, 11,000, I believe.
It actually showed it on, there was, there was a sheet in there that showed the savings. Because the 15-year was 347,000 over 15 years, so the 10-year was, I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, the 10-year had a cumulative base fee savings of 147,153. And then it also had the additional value by the renewal team of another 112,325.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
So I, I guess, uh, the only thing that we can, what we need to do tonight, council, is, uh, get any questions out there and maybe just kind of give, uh, Mr. Valentine, uh, an idea of what are your thoughts are of, uh, your, do we want to do a consideration possibly of 10-year, 5-year, or 10-year, or 15-year, or single year? So, um, so I know that, uh, there's a lot of reading to do, but let's go ahead and get started with Ms. Grego.
Um, I have a question. Is this, and the services rendered on this contract that we're considering, is there anything really, um, extremely different than the other prior contracts? Mike?
Um, not extremely different, no. As a matter of fact, it's basically an amendment to the contract to add, uh, add the timeframe. Um, and it should be decide some of the options provided. Um, I will add to that answer that, um, well, I won't, John, to get too big ahead, but it's been, uh, it's been a great asset to the city and the things that they've been providing me, you know, based on all of the regs that come out from the state and keeping up with all the testing. They have provided that all along. And, uh, it's been, you know, um, out of sight, out of mind for me, which is, uh, pretty awesome. And it's, uh, it's been running very smooth.
Uh, my initial thought is, you have experience with this company. You've had it, you know, I, I do remember back in the day, there are a lot of people that were upset about it. The city, I mean, it's a win-win situation. And if you're comfortable with it, and we do have an experience period with this company, if you're comfortable with 10 years, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. That's all I have.
Mr. Goodall?
Um, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mike. I mean, it's been, we haven't heard a bad, a bad thing at all. I agree with you on about going out 15 years. Makes me a little nervous, but I am very comfortable with 10 years. And I think we're getting the best bang for our bucket. Or we're getting a good bang for our bucket 10 years, and I'm totally comfortable with that. That's all I have.
Ms. Ogletree?
I had a question for Mike. The only thing that's different, it appears to me, with the 15-year agreement is that there's an initial distribution system GIS setup that's in that tranche. Is that something that you think that we need urgently? Or is that something that you're comfortable not having a plan in place to have?
Actually, um, it would be fantastic if we had the GIS for the entire city and all our utilities and all our infrastructure, you know, storm drain, everything. Um, but I think we need to move down that road, uh, to, to hire a company to do the entire, the entire city. It would be fantastic to have it. It's not urgent, but it's needed for strategic planning down the road. So we'd be able to, you know, call up the GIS map and it'll, it'll have all the data related to that pipe section, to that valve, when it was last operated, when it was, you know, if you shut this valve off, which, uh, customers are affected. That would, that would be ideal, but it's not emergent at this time. But, that being said, if we go à la carte and select that option, I think it was, uh, $51,000. So, um, we can kind of move forward, uh, along those lines.
I, I want to make sure I understand this, so that if we are, if whatever, excuse me, year agreement, these OOS pricing features, are those included in our yearly cost? Or are we committing to pay for that in addition to? I, I'm just trying to figure out where that, where that comes in.
Sure, and I'll let John jump in here. But, um, if you look at that sheet, it has the single year, the five-year, the 10-year, the 15-year. Uh, as you go across it, they're included in those agreements as you work down. And in others, those are optional. And what, uh, John and the team has provided are, what if we just wanted to go five-year and pick one of those items? You could pick it à la carte, and that's how much it would be. Correct, John?
Correct, that's exactly it. So if the item's not included and you still want it, but you don't want to go for the longer contract length, then you can purchase it outside of that.
Okay. Um, I guess the way I look at this is that we're always going to need a sewer. There's no, no, where we can envision that we're not going to need a sewer that works well. I don't really have a problem with committing to 15 years of service. If this company is doing a good job and we feel like there are safeguards written into our agreements with them that give us an out if something does go wrong, I don't have a problem with the 15-year. You know, God willing, we'll have a great sewer system in 15 years. That's my perspective.
Uh, you need to unmute, Mr. Shu. Frank, you need to unmute. Well, let's go ahead and we'll get back to him, uh, Mr. Williamson.
You also need to unmute.
Sorry, that feels a bit weird to me. Um, I see Audra there. I'll, I'll defer to, uh, Frank. Uh, uh, oh, there Frank is. Go ahead, Frank.
Oh, okay. Yeah, uh, no, I, I, I think the 10-year, I agree with Mike. I think that would be good. And, uh, the, the only thing, I have a question for John is, during the 10-year, uh, is there, I know we talked last time about, there's not going to be any major problems for breakdown or anything in there that, foreseeing the future is, uh, do you think that 10 years would cover most of, I mean, what we, what we're paying would cover any of that stuff?
Um, one of the biggest things that's going to determine where we're going to be is, uh, the state's new permit coming out to us. So if our facility's able to meet these new state regulations and permits, then we can just continue with the facility we have. If there's new requirements to where we have to retrofit the facility or anything like that, we'll have to maybe do slight upgrades to the facility we have to meet all the new regulations. But other than that, um, it's an older facility. It might need some, you know, capital improvements. But we already scheduled one capital improvement with our available budget every year, which is another 100,000 for repairs. So, uh, as long as the state doesn't throw any large curveballs our way, hopefully, we'll be able to continue with the facility under the budget we have.
Does the state give us some kind of, uh, warning or something ahead of time? I mean, you know, in a year advanced or something, what we need to do?
Yeah, so we've already, uh, submitted for permit renewal. And then once they get our paperwork and have time to go through it, they'll reach out to us. And there'll be a negotiation period to where our team works with the state to figure out which requirements. We're kind of like agreeing on requirements that the facility should have. They might say we need to do some monitoring that we feel is unfit. And that's the time that we voice those opinions and stuff like that.
Thank you. I, like I said, I agree with the 10 years and, uh, thank you for answering the question.
Okay, going to, uh, Mr. Williamson.
Hey, um, John, I have a question. The state's, uh, new requirements, are they all effluent-based, um, like, effluent quality testing? Or are some of them procedural or specific, um, uh, machinery requirements? I.e., if, if our effluent's good enough, we can, we can do it? Or are they going to make us install certain equipment? Or do you know that?
So with wastewater, it's mainly always just going to be effluent quality. Um, any industrial effluent quality, technically, the industrial users have to treat their waste before they send it to us. So a lot of that stuff isn't monitored. And then treatment technique stuff's more on the drinking water side, so.
Okay, so, so it's just effluent quality-based?
Correct.
Um, so, uh, I had a question. How, how long has your company in total, how, how long have they been operating? What is your years of experience? I mean, the company?
Uh, the company, um, we started out probably, I mean, we have contracts that we've been working at facilities for over 35 years.
Okay.
I don't know the exact date.
No, no, that's, that's good. I mean, that answers what I was thinking. So, um, I feel, uh, really along the lines with Councilwoman Ogletree. I mean, um, this, this is a, a company that we've had good experiences with. Um, there's, uh, contractual obligations that would provide, um, an out if, if those aren't being met. Um, I understand, uh, you know, um, all those actions are, are labor-intensive as well. However, I mean, usually the best indication of a person or organization's future behavior is their past behavior. So, um, we've had a great experience with this company. All indications are, we're not suddenly going to stop needing a sewer system overnight. I think that's unlikely. We've needed it for a long time. And we're going to continue to need it. Uh, and, you know, something, uh, that's just surprising to me, Mike, I'm sure you can attest to this a lot better than I can. But, you know, we've, this is the second time we've, uh, discussed this at least. And I'm sure, uh, Mike, you and your staff, which I greatly appreciate, have, um, spent countless hours behind the scenes working through this. In, in my opinion, I, I would lean towards the 15-year contract for the sake of, um, cementing a longer-duration, um, relationship that will give, uh, Jacobs confidence, um, moving forward. It'll give us peace of mind. And, I mean, not only, there's a lot of intangible money savings that, that, uh, we aren't looking at. You know, if, if we don't have to do this again in 10 years, Mike, that saves your position's time. That saves your staff's time. It gives them greater confidence to set deeper roots and, um, just, uh, move forward in a better-positioned manner for all of us. I would really strongly advocate for the 15 years myself. That's, that's my opinion.
John, I got a, the question, uh, first question I have for you is, uh, that GIS addition, is that 50, the 51,000, or is that, is it less worth the GIS just a little?
Just to purchase the GIS, GIS system out of scope was the 51,408.
Okay. Uh, would that be something that we would have to purchase with this contract? Or let's say in a year or so that we decide that we want to do that, that we purchase it at that price?
Yeah, all of our services are open to you guys anytime you want to do it, whether it's, uh, two months down the road or 10 years. Of course, prices vary year to year, depending on what the market does and the materials it is to bring it to you. But I doubt it's radically different from price.
Uh, Mike, you know, if we decide we want to do that GIS or not do it now, but want to do it, let's say, in a year, a year and a half, uh, you know, that is maybe one item that, uh, we can, like I say, go with the 10-year and maybe purchase that in a year or greater time and maybe use our, uh, marijuana funds to purchase that item. Uh, that would be a possibility, so that would be something to, to consider. The second question I have right now, and, and explain to me what, uh, I'm looking at the effluent items, of course, the water is, uh, if you're, the base fees are based at 1.08 million gallons per day. What is the BOD, FOB, and what is the TSS? What are, what are those two items?
Um, those are loading limits from the state. So BOD is biological oxygen demand, and the TSS is tell us suspended solids. It's how they rate facilities for treatment. They rate facilities based off organic loading and, uh, flow capacity. So that's just put into the contract in case we were to sign up and then the city, you know, doubles in size and now we're operating a facility twice as big as we used to. We wouldn't have the funding or tools necessary in that contract to support the project. So it's, it's what the, your actual state permit is right now.
Okay. Can you tell us what the, what we, what kind of influence that we, that you are getting at that plant now?
Yeah, right now, we fall anywhere between, uh, 40% to 70% capacity, depending on the month. Um, sometimes, you know, in the summer, flows can increase and stuff like that. But we don't have to start planning for any expansion or future, future growth through the state until we hit, uh, 80% capacity. And, uh, it'll take, you know, quite a few more developments or homes or something like that to push us up to that capacity.
Uh, Mr. Valentine, you know, of course, we have the new hotel coming online, probably in a, probably about a year, in a year and a few months. Uh, and John, of course, I'm not sure how much extra effluent would be possibly come out of that hotel with 100 rooms?
Uh, if it's just a hotel, they, they, the rule of thumb is 70 gallons per person per day for a household. Um, hotels are even less because households account for laundry and stuff like that that you probably aren't going to see people doing in a hotel too often. So maybe, I would, I would say 50 gallons to 40 gallons per person per day. So if you did 50 times 100, so then you'd have, you know, it wouldn't be that big of a change to the facility.
Right. Well, John, what would you say, uh, population-wise, that this community would have to grow to exceed that, uh, base, uh, rate right now?
Um, it would probably have to, I could do some rough math real quick.
And I think I skipped Mr. DeBon, we'll get back to you, Mr. DeBon.
It would probably have to, I mean, a rough estimate without us doing like a quick study or anything like that, you know, another 20 to 30% on top of the population you have, since we're, I mean, if you, if you think about it, we're only at 70 to 40% capacity. Um, 70% is the really, really high-flow months, and it's based off of a longer average. If you average the whole year, we're maybe at a 60% capacity for our organic loading and our flows. So if you added another 20 to 30%, then that's going to be the time where the state's going to want the wastewater plant retrofitted for, uh, increased capacity.
Okay, based on what you're telling me there is that roughly our population is, uh, right around 9,000. So our population would have to grow to probably right around 13,000 before we hit that, is what you're saying roughly, correct?
Yeah, roughly another 2,700 people. It depends heavy on industry, too. If you have a lot of heavy water users, uh, for industrial parts of town or stuff like that, it can vary greatly. But, uh, the rule of thumb, like I said, is, you know, 70 to 50 gallons per day per person for a residential household.
Okay, so what we anticipate that we would have to, because there we would have to go back to the drawing board and do an amendment to the contract at that point in time, whether we go with the 10-year or 15-year contract. Based on today's rates, what kind of additional cost would we have to negotiate, would you say, roughly, to, uh, to the contract?
I don't think it would be anything big. It'd probably just be within our, every year, we do a base fee adjustment that falls between 1 to 4% depending on, uh, how the market's going and stuff like that. So we would probably just recoup any costs we need through that. Um, I don't think it's going to be a large enough growth, fast enough for anything to where we have to do a special amendment on the contract. It'll probably just be instead of 01%. It'll probably just be, instead of a one percent increase, we maybe just bump it up to a two percent increase for the year, something along those lines.
And something I just wanted to point out quickly, I mean, if we're facing that kind of growth, we're also going to be seeing expanded meter fees from an expanded meter base. So, I mean, those would be offsetting things. Just wanted to point that out.
What I'm getting at is, like I said, you know, the way the community, it looks like it may grow over the next few years, and that's something that we need to, that's why I bring this up, is because we could reach that, you know, that twelve thousand threshold in the next, you know, four to five years, if things continue on the path that we're going right now. Let's see, what else did I have here? Bear with me here. Something that I saw, this was on section B fourteen, and it says that it said, when confluent XT design parameters, that the CH2M is not responsible for discharge violations. And it says that in a couple of the different items. It's also in the base fees. Why is that in there on those particular items? John?
What part of the contract is that again?
B one dash four, and under the base fees, that I saw, it says CH2M not responsible for discharge violations with influent exceed design parameters. But I was just kind of wondering what that was.
I'll have to double-check that. Mostly, most of the time, we're responsible for any discharge violations, and we incur those penalties and fees. Now, there is wording to where, if we give suggestions on upgrades that need to be made to the facility, and then the city neglects to do those upgrades, then we're not responsible, because we're not the ones putting the funding into the facility. I don't know if it's one of those clauses, but I can double-check that for you.
Okay, on page fourteen, under general, Exhibit A, it says, "Does not include service to integrate the city remaining data set." So do we have a data set right now that would have to be integrated? And if there's going to be an additional cost to that, if we do have a data set of any kind?
Let me pull that up. And what is that under, real quick?
It's under, it's on page fourteen, that was on page fourteen of the computer, Exhibit A.
Okay, let me look real quick.
Is that within the existing contract, Mayor?
I believe so. It's on page fourteen, it showed on under general.
And what sub-paragraph, Mayor, under Exhibit A?
Exhibit A, and it just, that's the only thing I saw. I think it was the, I think it was the first paragraph.
So, but you, wait, ask your question, please, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Well, what it does, what it says here, "Does not include service to integrate the city remaining data set." And I'm curious, is, do we have any data sets that would have to be integrated that, to the system, whether if we go with that ten-year plan, or a fifteen-year plan? And with the, it sounds like there would be an additional cost.
I'm not seeing the exact wording you're talking about in the contract. Any data sets that we have in the facilities have already been integrated with our systems already. So unless there's something I haven't already seen, or a data set that we haven't been provided, but to my knowledge, everything's already been integrated to our systems. So that should not be a problem.
And how many laptops would we have to provide? You know, I guess if we went with the ten-year plan? This talks about laptops that we would have to provide.
I think that was for the, was that for the GIS system setup? I believe for the
That was under option four on page sixteen. Because I know that was brought up the last time, that we would need to provide some laptops.
I don't think I have the exact packet you're looking at. I do know the only thing that would provide, that you need to provide laptops or tablets for, off the top of my head, was the initial distribution GIS system setup. And that's for the guys who use it in the field to make adjustments to the GIS system. And that's up to the city, however many tablets or laptops they want to provide their employees with. So that's, it would have to be something Mike and Mark worked out together to figure out what's going to be right for their needs.
So, Mr. Valentine, any idea, approximately four or five laptops?
Yeah, Mayor, I would say the locators, so two, along with the form and three, three to four. But I would say this, Mayor, before we bring this forward for formal approval, I'm going to find you answers for the data sets and the laptop question.
Okay. Let me see, what else I got? It also says, under the basic ion dashboard, it says, "To maintain a web-based GIS map for water distribution and natural gas." So are they going to be monitoring the natural gas, our natural gas system as well?
That would be added expense. That was a discussion, if we wanted to add the natural gas in there. That is, I don't believe, is included in the GIS distribution setup. We'd have to negotiate the gas system.
And it also says, "Does not include," in that same line, "Does not include services to maintain or update city's remaining assets." It was something else that I read in there, too. So it looks like the only additional cost on an annual basis would be if there's personnel qualifications that come up, that, it sounds like that would be something that would have to be negotiated on an annual basis, increasing labor costs, and there are other items in there, too. That sounds like that, I read that. That's correct, John, is am I correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's, like I said, the only additions that it seems like there is, is there's an annual base fee adjustment that we talk about, and that's where all that stuff's captured with labor increases or decreases, or anything along those lines. And there's a built-in base fee adjustment formula in the contract.
Okay. What do you mean by a hotspot?
Hotspots are areas that are known for stoppages or trouble spots within the collection system. So they may be more prone to excessive root growth, or rag stopping up. There's lots of different things that can cause that, but hotspots are just areas that need cleaned more often, or extra monitoring.
Do we have very many of those right now?
Oh, we have about thirteen.
Okay. I'll leave my questions at that, and I said, Mr. DeBono, do you have any questions?
Mr. DeBono, you're muted.
Going back, Mr. Mayor and Mike, to the ten-year contract, I think that's going to suffice, even though personnel and administration changes over the years, you still have a contract to honor, as far as Jacob's is concerned. But Mike, you touched about, you talked about the twenty-seven light poles, and the three that are inoperable because of what, faulty internal wiring? I just had maybe a question for you or John. Are all the lights going to be field serviceable for the city in the event there's a power supply module that has to be replaced, or a complete assembly that has to be replaced?
So when you're referring to the LED light upgrade, that's just for the wastewater treatment facility. So there's twenty-seven poles there. We do the swap out of all internals, we rewire that one light and everything. And once it's fully up and operational and everything, we give all that equipment, that becomes the city's property. And from then on, if there's any problems or repairs that need to be made on it, it'll become out of the repairs budget that the wastewater treatment facility already has.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as, going back to council, any other questions that council has thought of through this process? None? Okay. I guess, Mr. Valentine, like I said, I guess there's the thought of a ten-year, but do I think the best thing to do is when you bring it forward, that bring it up, whether it's the one-year, five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year, and then bring a motion, someone will bring a motion to one of those areas, and we'll move forward with whichever council fills at the time. Would that be the recommendation that you'd have?
Yes, Mayor, I'll take a look at everything, the questions that came up, make sure we've got a good contract kind of negotiated, and I'll bring forward the options again. It sounds like the five-year option, no one mentioned that. So I'll look at the ten and fifteen-year, do a kind of a return on investment assessment, and I'll bring that back to council.
Okay. I guess there are another for the questions. John, thank you for all the questions and the answers that you've had to answer for. I guess if there's any other questions that council can come up with between now and then, council can give them to Mike, and he could, Mike and Mr. Valentine could get them back to you, so.
Sounds good, thank you so much for your time.
Right, thank you.
Please, Sean.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Go on to item two, review of the Colorado Department of Transportation IGA for exit eleven, Mr. Valentine, and like I said, I think we had one review on this, pretty clear, but want to go and just do a brief review of what we
Sure. So we have several IGAs with the highway department on areas, like on their new construction projects, under the viaduct over here by McDonald's and such, where they build it, and we are in charge of maintenance. And based on Colorado revised statutes, the highway department is basically charged with everything within the travel lines from curb to curb, and then anything outside that is the local agency. So CDOT has worked up this agreement in conjunction with the city. They, we've had a kind of a committee review of aesthetics and what all is involved in the design, and that's included in the map attachment to show you the areas of concern that would be city's responsibility for whatever type of landscaping falls within there. In the review and discussion with CDOT, we've asked them to keep it as low maintenance as possible, not a lot of irrigation, zero escape, you know, so that this is quite a ways away for our parks and public works to get out to that area to maintain a lot of stuff. So we've kept that at a minimum. Everybody was pretty much, staff-wise, was pretty much good with this. There are some heartburn issues with the graffiti removal on some of the walls. Our hope is that, you know, it's on an interstate highway where traffic is traveling seventy-five miles an hour. I know they surprise us on where graffiti shows up, but if, in fact, it does show up, the highway department has agreed to work with us for traffic control and such. Lighting is, will be within our system. As a matter of fact, the CDOT is working to incorporate into this construction, and the fiber optics line that they're working on putting along the highway corridor, they're on extending our power out to this area. So that's a, that's a great thing to help to get our infrastructure out there, and from there, we may be able to expand. But the lighting, like all the highway lighting through town is on us, they've picked some colors of bridges and stuff, and the landscaping. All in all, this is kind of a boilerplate kind of a thing that CDOT is doing now, is you drive through Pueblo, and you see landscaping, and, you know, rocks placed in, like a spray of color, different color of rocks. That is up to the city to maintain. So I've always had that question, well, how come Pueblo's exits look better than ours? Well, these type of agreements are in place up there, so this is, this is part of it. With that, they are fast-tracking the project. They are, I think we're supposed to have, excuse me, they are doing what's called a FOR process for the design of this, before they bid it out. And that's coming within the month, and they've been moving that around a little bit. But from the FOR, they're ninety to ninety-five percent done with design, ready to go out to bid. So one of the things they have to have in place is this memorandum of understanding to make sure everything they build is maintained properly. With that, I'll answer any questions?
Okay. Start with Ms. Gregel.
Mike, does this agreement differ at all from other agreements we've had with the state for maintenance of exits into town? Is it any different, or are they requiring any more?
So this agreement is kind of new for exit eleven. The others, we had agreements to maintain detention facilities and such, and parking areas under the highway, but all in all, it kind of is the same, or a different area?
Is it going to be difficult for the city to maintain that? I mean, it's a mute point, because CDOT's going to do what CDOT wants to do, I mean, you know, they're pretty particular. But is it going to be a difficulty for the city to maintain that exit, being it's not quite in the main quarter of downtown Trenton?
It is going to be a little more statistic-wise work, snow removal on the trail that they're putting in, and the sidewalks to tie the two sides together, that's the responsibility of the city to do the snow removal and such. So that means an added route a bit ways outside the corner of the city. So it will be, but we have to, have to figure it out as we move forward, on whether we, you know, add personnel, or how we plan this in the whole process. But the landscaping, like I said, we're trying to keep it to the minimum, so that it's zero escape at best, so that we don't have a lot of maintenance of plantings and such. But yes, it's going to be a bit of a challenge to get out there.
Can you change these agreements once we sign off on the MOU? I'm asking this, like, we don't know, that exit is going to be pretty popular, I'm assuming, in the coming years? If we have the money and we want to enhance that exit, is it hard to add to that adapter or CDOT steadfast?
No, as a matter of fact
They ask
Contracts can be amended. We'll ask the attorney that question, but anyway, will it be difficult? We'll ask the attorney that question, but anyway, it, will it be difficult? I don't think so. CDOT has been good to work with as we go forward. As a matter of fact, some of the aesthetics that they are proposing, they may be coming forth with some kind of pub sharing. We want to really enhance those roundabout areas with a trimmed ad sign or, you know, downtown this way, kind of a sign, they're not going to do that. They're, they're going to put up the, you know, hard traffic signs that guide people through there, but if we want information signage or some nice artwork in there, they're going to let us do that. They're, they're working through that now, so hopefully we can add to it before we have to change this, and we could do it upfront.
Your artwork better blend with federal color blue, federal color red, and federal color ochre. Ochre, federal, these are funny, federal color. Anyway, sorry, excuse me, I don't mean to.
That's okay.
Yeah, you know.
Beautiful entrance to the state and say.
Is that federal ochre?
You know, that is.
I think that was like state ochre. I'm sorry.
No, you're not.
Yeah, you're right.
No, I, exit 11, exit 11 is vital. No, exit 11 is pretty vital. I mean, you know, that's an accident waiting to happen where it's at now, so I don't have any objections to the MOU.
Okay, you know.
I have nothing, I'm good with it.
Tom, Mr. Goodell.
For Mike is, it looks like we have a lot of responsibilities that are going to kick in fairly soon with regard to planning trails and if we're going to have public art or what the wayfinding signs. Who at the city is going to be doing that? I, I mean, are they aware that this is coming and it's going to require time and focus and attention? Is the outdoor recreation person going to be involved? I'm just curious, on, on our end, and we're receiving this, who's going to catch it?
Yeah, that's a great question. And all of the above, I think we'll, there'll be kind of a committee to look at this. We had a committee to look at the aesthetics approach. I, if you recall, CDOT has actually offered up roughly, it's not official yet, but $200,000 toward all the exits to look at, you know, our traffic patterns and all moving forward throughout town, so, yeah, wherever, every person and staff is up there and added, but we will do this collaboratively with hopefully a new planner onboard. That is out to add again and hoping to fill that position. Our outdoor recs coordinator, Wally, all of the above will be part of that. Of course, Public Works, because they're the ones who have to do the maintenance along the way of all, everything that, that we install and put up, so. I know that didn't give you a direct answer, but it's a lot of us.
Are arts and culture going to be involved in public art issues on that?
They are the advisory, arts and culture advisory to City Council, so I would say they play a, a major role in, in helping us go with whatever art is proposed.
Okay. I'm, I'm really excited about all of this. I just think it's, once again, it's another ton of work that's headed our, the way of the city, and I just want to make sure that we have the people there, ready to, to do it, so that it comes out beautifully, and it is a great introduction to this part of the state and to Trenton, so.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Shu.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure how this, Mike, I'm having trouble with it. Uh, Mike, a couple of questions. What's, is the lighting going to be the same as the bypass down here, or is they going to have poles and different lighting?
So they're working with Mr. Duran, our Electrical Utility Director. The lighting that they did in these, in the new project was kind of a pilot project with the LEDs on the side of the thing. We are trying to get away from those as we speak, but we are looking toward not your standard, you know, Cobra head silver arched light over the top of the highway. We're trying to, to do some period style lighting, like they did for us down here at the Main Street exit and as you come into town, so that's what we're looking for. Of course, CDOT is trapped for money, and they're asking for any kind of city help there also, so working through that.
Okay. The other question is, with all this stuff happening and everything going on, what's the chances of here in the near future to, from the radio station all the way up to the exit here at Windy's to redo that road and get it back up into shape? It kind of needs repaving there on Santa Fe Trail. I mean, I know that's not part of this, but is there a possibility we could start working on maybe getting some of that done, because it's good, it gets a lot of traffic there. Everybody goes that road for Walmart and everything else, and it's just getting kind of beat up, and the shoulders aren't very good on there, so I, I'm just kind of, if we're doing all this project here, I think that would probably be a good advantage if we could work on that later on.
That would, that would definitely be part of that whole joint study that we did with the county and Trust for Public Lands and the Nature Conservancy for connectivity to the park. We'd like to actually, we've had an internal discussion about widening that road for bike, bike lanes and, and stuff, because, I mean, that's, that's part of it, so it, it's not in the budget per se, but it's, it's definitely on our, on our radar, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Williamson.
I have nothing further to add, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeBonham.
Yeah, Mike, I may have mentioned this a few city council meetings ago, maybe two or three months ago. Is the city going to initiate the utilization of cameras, or will CDOT incorporate their CDOT webcams, or is it going to be a joint effort?
Um, I, I've asked CDOT about that, about having their cameras up there. It, for the city, it, it's not within our network, and I think it's out of range, but CDOT may put one of their webcams there to, to monitor not only interstate for, you know, the traffic area, but also for, uh, snow closures and such, so you can, you know, get on their website and, and check out the road conditions.
Okay.
A follow-up.
Now, Mike, the, the question I had is, and I asked it last time, we had this discussion, is who's going to pick the, out of those three colors, who gets to pick that? Is the city or is the state do that?
Actually, there was a, a group of the designer, the landscape architect, the engineers from CDOT, and the city was able to join in with the aesthetics committee who picked the colors, who picked, I wish I had a picture of what, what came out of that. I didn't want to get it out there too early because of funding issues and whether they can do it, but the Colorado flag in the, kind of in the bridge railing and such, but yeah, the, the city was part of that, and, and the city did, along with ochre, the federal color ochre.
I'll just get it.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll, that'll make Mr. Downs happy, I think, you know.
Mayor, I, I can honestly say, being the colorblind guy, I had no voice in this whatsoever, so I had nothing with the picking of these colors.
I'm colorblind also. The other question I had is, you, you were talking about maybe because of the responsibilities that it's going to put on our personnel, and being that it is under the highway, the area that we have to maintain, especially in the wintertime, what priority is that going to be? Is that going to be a high priority that we have to get cleaned up quickly, kind of like we have to do with the hospital and some of the other areas, being that it's right off the interstate?
Um, so currently, we, we clean Santa Fe Trail, and if you're just talking store removal on the roadway, CDOT gets, will get all the road, the exits, the on and off ramps, we take, CDOT actually takes Santa Fe Trail down to where their, their hedge shed is and their sand barn, and then we, we blade it from there into town, so that's already there. The question becomes the walking trail, and when, when we can do all that, and I, I'm going to have to say that we prioritize all our infrastructure in town, you know, around City Hall, our parking lots and, and everything, and then as they can. It's a, it's a 10-foot wide trail, and you can actually run, you know, a pickup on it with the blade, so once all our parking lots are done, I envision a truck getting up there on it. Part of the issue we've had, and I've told CDOT, it's battling snow plows, we, you know, they plow, they're charged with plowing the snow to the curb lines, and where does it go, up on the walk, and then we plow it back onto the road, so it's, it'll be, it'll be interesting. It's going to be a kind of a trial by error on how we get up there and get it done.
Okay. Uh, the last question I have, of course, is, you know, we're talking about all the different entities, and we're going to get involved with some of this planning that we have to come up with, and you mentioned, I'm not sure if tourism would want to have some kind of a sign of some sort possibly in there, so that might be something if you want to talk to Marty about, and see if they want to, want to consider some kind of signage in there of some sort.
Okay. I will say that CDOT doesn't like a lot of signs on, you know, within their property to distract the driver from what's actually having traffic-wise, but we, we've discussed this, kind of a sign that, on the Santa Fe Trail, like to get people to come into town. You know, you've got it here on exit 11, but there's a lot more happening down below, so we're, we're working toward that, and that might be internal with tourism and signage, so.
Anybody, any council member have any further questions? Okay. I think that probably got, everybody's okay with the IGA, Mr. Valentine, so we can move forward with that.
Okay. Thank you, council.
Item three, fourth quarter 2020 marijuana sales tax allocations and consideration. Uh, the only question I have, so real quick, Mr. Valentine, is you have city buildings, HVAC systems, and then you have question marks. What, what are the question marks, Tom?
Um, we hadn't got quotes for that yet. The HVAC system was for the bar department. Their system is from 1978, I believe, and never been upgraded or, you know, it's been sort of maintained over those years, but, so, uh, question marks are there because we haven't got quotes, but we felt comfortable based on what we did with City Hall, that $25,000 was a good number.
Okay. And then on that PD vehicle, the 16,500, is that separate from the marijuana funds?
Uh, it is, Mayor. That, we had the vehicle radio replacement in the marijuana funds, but after discussion with staff, we moved it out to, that should come out of our fleet budget, so that's what's, it's shown in there, but it's moved over to the sidewalk fleet.
Okay, good. All right. Let's go ahead and get some questions from, uh, council, Ms. Gregel.
Uh, I have no questions.
Uh, Mr. Goodell.
I have no questions.
Hey, Ms. Ogletree.
The only question I had was, December sales tax was 335, anyway, just the fourth quarter, is this a low or a high, or is this an average fourth quarter marijuana receipts? That's all I was wondering.
Sure, I will defer to Cheryl, I believe she's online, she hadn't received anything yet, so I think that's an estimate. Cheryl?
Well, actually, the fourth quarter figures came in this morning. I have updated my spreadsheet. Um, this is a higher fourth quarter than last. If you give me a second, I can figure that out for you. Um, it's, it's $183,000 more than last fourth quarter.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. That's the only question I had.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shu.
No, I don't have any questions.
Uh, Mr. Williamson.
Uh, no questions, thank you, Cheryl.
Uh, Mr. DeBonham.
No questions at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, so Cheryl, you said that those adjustments came in this morning, this 1,02437, is that, well, is that correct, or is it, what is the actual figure going to be?
Uh, Mayor, I think, if I heard correctly, are you there?
Yes. So, um, the actual receipt for December, $340,197, for a total of $1,129,233, and that will end up leaving $2,664 unallocated in the projects line item, and then $28,852 to TCF, and $115,409 for incentive.
Okay. All right. I have no question, that was the only question I had, the only question that I did have, so someone like council is agreeable to everything that is here and.
Mr.
Is there a question?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Came to mind. On that money that we're spending, if we're spent on that money with, that we're doing for Noah's Ark, is that the part, is that just part of the completion of the original contract, or is that the overrun?
That is completion of the original contract with some change orders involved along the way. With every construction project, there's change orders back. Um, that's the, I hope that's the, that'll get us completed and, and get Noah's Ark in the building.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, has council thought of any other items that they want to bring forward at future work sessions, Ms. Gregel?
I have none. The only thing I was thinking about is, like to do, since I don't know if Historic Main Street or one of the other boards or commissions within the city would like to take on maybe doing more outdoor dining. doing more outdoor dining during the summer. If we're back to semi-normal by June, July, you know, tourist season, if we could some for downtown merchants to have tables downtown, thinking that, you know, there's an opportunity there that we can help the downtown businesses. So it's something to think about.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Goodall?
Well, I think, um, with prior conversations, maybe it's time for us to sit down and have a discussion as city council on the future of Santa Fe Trail. And let's start looking at that because it's, it's going to be sitting there and something that's going to have to be dealt with. I think, uh, it's a big project and we need to start having some conversations about it.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
I am interested in, um, the city putting together some kind of a task force on getting housing going in the Trinidad area. I think that it's critical that we are, um, being as proactive as we can be to draw, um, people to build houses and neighborhoods here because we need them. And so I, I don't know that, um, if we don't do something like that, that we're going to miss time and opportunity that we could be, um, taking advantage of to make Trinidad a, a place that developers are thinking they'd like to build. I, um, I became, I, I passed along to, I believe to Mike and the Mayor, uh, housing study that Alamosa commissioned and they had it done pretty quickly that was amazing. And it's information that Trinidad needs to know about itself in terms of what's the current inventory of houses, um, what can people who are here afford, what can our workforce afford, uh, what's, what is our current need, what are our prospective needs? And I think we really need to get a handle on all of that information as we turn the corner and, and things start opening up again with COVID. I think it's going to be critical.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shu? Go ahead, Mr. Valentine.
Uh, Mayor, I was going to report, um, later, but I can, it seems like a good segue. Where staff has been working diligently to try and put together a housing forum for our February 22nd work session. Uh, we've, we've been trying to figure out the format. Um, we do have that housing assessment from Alamosa. Um, and it is part of discussions with DOLA Housing and CHAFRA and, um, OEDIT and Southern Colorado Economic Development that, uh, that I think will all be involved, um, in the forum to discuss their opportunities that they have. But the assessment seems to be one tool that they need. Um, we were told that, uh, we believe the Alamosa study, well, one of the studies was around, uh, $75,000 to accomplish. So, um, within this forum on the 22nd, um, hopefully, um, we can flesh that out and, and definitely listen to all, uh, all agencies, opportunities, hoping that they, actually the, the, you know, free market also sees opportunities and, and builds some of those homes that, uh, Councilwoman Ogletree is talking about to, to infill some of the empty lots and then, uh, work toward larger developments as needed. Um, you know, I know that, uh, throughout mine is coming on and, and, uh, a lot of people are moving here for various reasons to get away from the urban areas. So definitely, um, on our minds, staff wise, as a matter of fact, we had a, um, a conference call today to try and plan out how, what, what all the information we can present. And it's going to probably take several, um, work sessions just to, to flesh that all out. But we want to get the opportunities in front of everybody, uh, of all the, you know, opportunity zones, the, the building tax credits, the, uh, everything that's available out there in front of, uh, in front of council and everybody listening in, hopefully to developers, uh, to help them along. Match that along with however, uh, council and, uh, whatever staff provides to council for our incentive program to try and, you know, get that opportunity. Because I, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Ogletree that we don't want to be caught with, uh, well, I won't say that. We're already caught behind the eight ball. How's that?
I, I had a question for you, Mike. Do you expect that the public will be able to speak during that work session? Because I've had a few people asking if they could, can say something there, something.
Um, definitely, uh, uh, we've talked about that. Um, whether it'll be, uh, someone speaking, uh, something or if it's question and answers, um, uh, we want to have that portion at the end of the meeting for that interaction with everybody listening. We don't want to just say, here's everything. Okay, fine. So, yes.
All right.
We, we want to keep that open dialogue.
All right. Thank you so much.
You bet.
I, I wanted to add something before I go on to Mr. Shu, that as a matter of fact, I have to make a call to someone who called out of Denver. And it was interesting, uh, he was saying that they want to know what concerns we have or what questions we had because there's, uh, the number of businesses and people that want to move out of Denver to Trinidad. So I'm going to find out tomorrow when I talk to this person, see what, uh, what's going on. So I could report back to you guys later on. But it was an interesting email that I got that I'll make the phone call on tomorrow. Uh, Mr. Shu?
Oh, the only thing I have is that, um, I had talked to Mike a couple of times. Uh, and I know this Christmas is over, but I'd like to, out of this marijuana fund, I'd like to put, well, you know, four or five thousand bucks away every time on a quarter. So that, I talked to Mike, we haven't bought any Christmas decorations or did anything. And I'd like to see Commercial Street get decorated a little bit better and that. And I, I just think that if, uh, we have the opportunity, that'd be a good way to, to do it, to save a little money for that. That's, that's my only solution. I made my question. Thank you.
It's a good, good thought. Very good thought. Uh, Mr. Williamson?
I've got nothing at this point, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. DeBonu?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, like I said, I don't have anything other than I just wanted to mention the State of the City address on, uh, Thursday at 6:00 PM. I talked to, uh, Tom Murphy today. He stopped me on the street and he's going to be live streaming that on YouTube. And, uh, we're going, we're going to be able to have some questions at the end from people who want to chat in. And probably what we'll do is we'll probably have, uh, so one person from staff that'll be, uh, looking at these questions and then bringing them up to me. And then I can either answer them or direct the, the person that has the answers to answer the question. Kind of like what we've done before in an open forum, but this time it's going to be a little more, um, not necessarily complicated, but just, it'll just be the length of time. So we've got to be prepared for that. And I will be addressing, uh, the community, uh, from City Hall here. Uh, I'll have, uh, matter of fact, Ms. Gregel, I think it'd be a good idea for her to be, as Mayor Proton, to be in house with me and possibly even Mr. Valentine. So there might be two or three of us in City Hall here. And the rest of council, uh, I guess if, when you want to be here, that's fine, but you'll have to mask up. Uh, otherwise you can get on with, uh, on, on the Zoom. So, uh, Mr. Valentine, do you have anything else to add?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Um, a couple of things. Um, uh, really exciting, uh, through our request for proposal for, you know, proprietors to help us run Monument Lake, we've got three proposals, uh, very, very well thought out, comprehensive proposals. So I want to, uh, put those on the drive, get those out to city council. Staff is working on, on how, uh, logistically we bring, you know, we, we thought we would interview three of the, the top three and, and we got three very well-written proposals. So, um, you know, I, I thought I said, man, we have enough meetings already. Well, um, I'm going to be sending out some kind of meeting and, and, uh, probably, uh, executive sessions to interview each, uh, um, each applicant or, uh, proposal. So, uh, be looking for that. Uh, we'll put those out on your drive so that you can start reviewing and, and wrap your minds around, um, around them. Um, three very good proposals, three very different in, in several ways. So, um, it's going to be, uh, fun times, uh, selecting this time around. I, I really feel like we're going to get, uh, a good let's see. Um, and then, just to let you know, uh, Fox West, uh, Alliance, uh, is reseeded and, um, the group is actually looking at, uh, putting the Fox West on the historic register. Uh, they're talking about preliminary application for that. Uh, there's more funding that's available when you do that. So, um, I've told the group that it is a city building and city council needs to have a say on whether they want to put that on the national register or not. Um, I can't see any reason why not, but it's, it's, the city's building. So, um, we are planning on a work session on March the 8th. To have an update from the Fox West Street Theater, uh, folks for that. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
You know, I think it'd be a good idea because, you know, we have, uh, various items coming up in work sessions. If maybe you can do a timeframe of 60, uh, maybe the, or the next 60 days, uh, the next two months to see what, uh, work sessions we're going to have and what dates. If you, I'm not sure if you can plan that far ahead. That might be something, anyway, Council has an idea of what's coming at us.
I, I will, Mayor. Uh, staff would like to know what's coming at us. We are, it's, it's coming at us fast and furious. It's, it's fun times, it's, uh, scary times, it's all good. It's, and I will, um, we do have a running, uh, kind of, um, list of work session items that Audrey keeps and we try our best to get, uh, good information in front of council. So, um, I don't, I don't want to rush them along, but I do, you know, we do need to move forward. And so last meeting when I said, yeah, boy, it sure would be nice to skip a work session here and there, um, may have to retract that.
Like I said, just a good guesstimate, like, so they can always be moved around, but if we can get a kind of a guesstimate as to what, uh, you know, over the next 60 days, what work sessions we might, we might, we might want to have. Uh, any thoughts from council or Mr. Downs? Do you have any thoughts?
No, Mayor. I, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. Council, any other thoughts? Okay. All right. That ends the work session tonight. We will now adjourn and, um, we'll see you on Thursday night at 6:00 PM. Okay. Good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.